Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the South Yorkshire, Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire Joint Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee this 8th of December 2023. The meeting today is open to the public, so a warm welcome to all of you in attendance and anyone watching online. My name is councillor Ruth Millsam, I'm Chair of this Joint Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee and a member at Sheffield City Council. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent or off so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from council staff present, and the assembly point is outside in Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use to those images and sound recordings for webcasting. So can I please ask that members and officers in attendance introduce themselves? Can we take members first and then we'll go round and officers can introduce themselves? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I was just getting used to this microphone. My name is councillor Yaseen, I'm a councillor in Rotherham and I also chair the Health Select Commission in Rotherham. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Glynnis Smith and I'm the Chair of Health and Adult Social Care in Doncaster.
Hi Chair, councillor Jeff Anish, I'm Chair of Orduan's Scrutiny Committee on Barnsley Council. Thank you.
And I'm Catherine Harkthorod, I'm a Governance Advisor at Rotherham.
Caroline Martin, Senior Governance Officer, City of Doncaster Council.
Anna Marshall, Scrutiny Officer at Barnsley Council.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Richard Parker, I'm Chief Executive at Doncaster and Bassett Law Teaching Hospitals.
Good afternoon, I'm Paul Parsons from Stan, we've been supporting the ICB on the engagement on the cancer NSO.
Good afternoon, I'm Amalatima, I'm the Executive Place Director for Sheffield, I'm also the Cancer Lead for South Yorkshire and Bassett Law Cancer Alliance.
Hello, I'm Julia Dix, I'm breast surgeon in Barnsley and I'm here today as Clinical Director for the Cancer Alliance for South Yorkshire and Bassett Law.
Thank you all very much and thank you for coming today and giving your time to this committee. So apologies for absence, I think we received two apologies from councillor Suddington and councillor Warmby today, is that correct? And then exclusion of the public and press, there are no items today that require the exclusion of public or press. Declarations of interest, I have to ask members if they wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? None? Thank you. Okay, we move on to item five, which is minutes of the previous meeting, which are in the public document pack. If anyone's lacking a document packet, there are some more up here.
Jeff? Yeah, Chair, on page eight at the top, paragraph six, two and six, three, it's the same information in both paragraphs, so one of the paragraphs needs deleting. Top of page eight in the minutes.
Well spattered, thank you. Page eight in the report pack. Yeah, duplicate paragraph. Okay. Any other matters from the minutes? In which case our members happy to accept those minutes as a correct record of the last meeting held on the 23rd of August? Agreed, thank you. Okay, so item six, and welcome to our presenters, we've got the oncology review, this is an item that this committee has been considering for a while, and I think today we've reached a point where you're bringing a report to us and asking the committee whether further consultation is required at this point in time, that, just check, I've got that checked? Okay.
I've got some of the paper copies of the report because it was circulated later, so wave if you want a paper copy and I'll bring you on. Anybody?
Okay, thank you. Right, let's hear your report, thank you. So we've got Emma, Julia, Paul and Richard.
Thanks Chair, it's actually just the three of us on this item, I think Richard's here for the following item, is that right?
Yeah Chair, I'm here for the York presentation.
And Chair, I do have a cast behind me who've been very involved in the detail, so if there is or are any issues that we need to clarify, if that's okay, I'll ask one of the individuals to come to the table and obviously introduce themselves before they do that. Okay, so thank you very much for inviting us today just to talk about the non-surgical oncology outpatient service transformation. Obviously we shared a briefing paper with you prior to this and we've obviously got a presentation that we're going to go through today. So the purpose of today for us is to outline the drivers for change, to provide clarity on what this change means for the populations that we serve, to give an overview of the process and the involvement activity we've undertaken to date, to outline the rationale for the proposed model that we are suggesting today, and to provide assurance regarding mitigations to minimise the impact on our population and to gain a steer on the next step. So that's really the kind of overview, the high level presentation. The ask of the members today is, one, to note the approach to the co-production of the service model, the assurance process and the progress that we have made to date; the second is to support the proposed approach for the stabilisation phase of this programme; and the third is to note the level of patient and public involvement already achieved by this programme and the role that it has played in the decision-making to date, and to indicate if you expect any further consultations to take place in the stabilisation phase of the programme. So they're really the high level aims. I'll ask Julia and Paul to take us through the detail now, thank you.
Could we have the next slide, please? So this first slide just covers why we've ended up doing this piece of work. So nationally, there's a shortage of consultant oncologists and that's something that we certainly see reflected in our region. Going along with that is that an increased demand, there's wonderful advances that have been made in oncology drugs for patients with cancer, and that's meant that patients are living longer and longer, but those are more and more complex and the demand on the oncologists is increasing. Across our region, we were aware that there was some variation in how oncology services were being delivered, and that was something that with this piece of work we would like to address. And the other change that's occurring nationally and we're embracing locally in our region is advancing roles, different ways of working for different members of the team, so the team will be consultant-led, but there's other roles that are being developed such as consultant pharmacists and more advanced nursing practice to support the oncology teams. Can I have the next slide, please? So the proposal that we've got at the moment is looking at changing face-to-face outpatient appointments. So a lot of the service is not changing. For example, urgent GP referrals will still be seen locally, that's a process that goes through diagnostics for patients in their local hospitals. So the focus of this change is really those, once those patients are diagnosed with a cancer and if they're needing to see the oncology team, then it's those face-to-face appointments. Treatments, we're looking to increasingly deliver locally, so that's sort of going alongside this work, is more and more bringing chemotherapy treatments back to the localities. And the focus of this work has been on the large volume cancers that we see, which are breast and lung, colorectal, so that's bowel cancers, and urology cancers such as prostate and bladder and things like that. So alongside that, as well as bringing more and more chemotherapy locally, we're also looking to support virtual appointments where possible. That's something that's sort of been increasing over the last few years and that's a piece of work that we're also trying to use to support this work that we're doing. Next slide, please. So as I've described, this is a diagram of our services, it does include North Derbyshire because our services from Western Park do include Chesterfield as well. So the less, it says rarer tumours, but tumours that you probably have heard of, things like pancreatic, those are always being treated centrally in Sheffield. And patients that are on complex clinical trials will be treated centrally. Radiotherapy involves very complex technology and that again is always being treated in Sheffield and that's not something that we're looking at in this process. So our specialist cancer centre is in Sheffield and that diagram indicates the other localities that have an oncology service. If anybody's got any questions about any of this at this time?
Could you just read out the numbers?
At the bottom, they're a little bit small.
Because it's very small for us.
Yeah, fair enough. I can see people turning around rather than looking at the one in front. So new referrals average there of 657 per month, new outpatient attendances averages 610 per month. These are total figures and the cancer groups that we're talking about, breast, lung, urology and colorectal, account for about 75% of these numbers. And follow-ups, as you can see there, 8,176. And at the bottom, it just comments that currently about 38% of appointments would be non-face-to-face, virtual rather than face-to-face appointments. So as we've taken on this work, we've obviously engaged with our community and Paul has been leading on that work, so I'm going to ask him just to discuss what that's involved. Could we have the next slide, please?
Thank you very much. So the programme has had patient and public involvement at its very core since the first temporary adjustments were put in place back in 2021. It started out by analysing feedback from patients, the feedback they provided in the normal course of business, and it used that to develop questions for a survey that was distributed to all of the clinics. 150 patients responded to that survey and the team conducted some one-to-one structured interviews to really dig into some of the points that were raised in that survey. So that was the first piece of work that was done. In the spring of this year, as plans and ideas were starting to form, the team ran, planned and ran an open public listening exercise. Our thanks to members of this committee who helped us think about our plans for that exercise and to share the communications that went with it, I'm very grateful for that. The challenges that you offered at the time about access and reaching a whole range of people out there in our communities were really helpful and we took that on board. The survey ran, the listening exercise with the survey ran from the 6th of March through to the middle of April. Colleagues promoted it at clinical sites through postcards with QR codes, posters with QR codes and through paper copies as well. And we also operated a telephone line that people could ring up, so those who weren't comfortable working online could ring up. We either took them through the survey online or sent out a paper copy that they then returned to us via business reply. Our thanks really go out to the clinical colleagues who took this on board in the course of their work and they did such a great job in promoting the survey. Aside from that, hearing from patients in the service, we also went out door-knocking, door-to-door across the areas in all of the council areas, and we promoted it through the Cancer Alliance website and with the help of partners in the NHS, other public sector partners, and out through social media and voluntary sector networks as well. With our door-to-door work, we targeted the least well-off areas in each of the different council areas, knowing that those are the people who are least likely to respond to this kind of exercise and likely those that would have most problems and issues with travelling as well. So we achieved a really good spread with our target across the age range, weighted towards older people because half of the people that the cancer service sees are over the age of 70, so we weighted it towards that. And there was a really good spread across the localities as well, not just from the door-knocking, which yeah, we knew who was going to respond from there, but also through the, for the patients. Chesterfield and North East Derbyshire had the biggest proportional response in relation to their population, Doncaster and Bassett Law the lowest. The rest were all within a few percentage points of where we'd expect them to be relating to the population there. 331 current service users, current patients or their carers responded, and 510 local residents who had no experience of cancer services or none in recent time, so none in the last 12 months. And our partnership with 12 voluntary sector organisations locally, we worked with them and provided the funds for them to be able to hold conversations, focus groups and feedback to us. They were really useful and it meant that we heard from a range of people that we really wouldn't otherwise hear from in these exercises. So 954 people in total took part, with which we were very pleased. The people who took part told us that what was important to them was seeing the same person each time, they wanted that continuity, they wanted short waiting times and that was to get to a service but also when they arrived, making sure that they didn't have to wait too long for their appointments to actually happen. And good communication also, and there's commonality in that with other services as well, good communication were the most important factors. Most people told us that they either did or would expect to travel to their appointment by car. Most felt that travel of 15 to 30 minutes or 30 to 45 minutes was reasonable and a sizeable proportion felt that travel of up to an hour was reasonable as well. Most of the current travel difficulties weren't related to the actual travel but were related instead to parking. And they told us that the location of distance to and accessibility of the location of the accommodation when they were there was the most important. So in total, more than 1,100 people have contributed to this programme so far and we continue a close dialogue with the Patient Advisory Board. We've already started planning our programme of involvement for next year, starting with visits to each of the locations that Julia has mentioned with patient advisory board members so that we get to truly see these services from a patient perspective.
Can I have the next slide, please? So taking the engagement work that we've done, that Paul had done with patients and also with staff members as well, we then started to look at various possible clinical models. So we considered leaving things as they were, consolidating everything into one site or having a central, what we've called a hub, so a site where more specialist things may happen and a spoke. And we developed alongside that some what we called hurdle criteria, so certain criteria that we felt were essential for the site to have to help assess the different models, so obviously things like patient safety was, it had to be a safe service, it had to be a service that was deliverable. We have had a non-surgical oversight group which has got members from partner organisations across the region to assess the models using the criteria that we'd developed. And we also took our development work to a North Region peer review group with other sites and areas in North of us that are also looking at the same kind of work as we are for the same reasons. So the hub and spoke model was the model that evaluated best, particularly around patient safety and quality. So this is looking at having a cancer hub, having clinics for all cancer groups and then more spoke sites that would still be offering some face-to-face clinics for those more main cancer groups that we've talked about. Next slide, please. So this next slide I think is important, this highlights the commissioned service that we have in our region, which does give an oncology presence for breast urology, lung and colorectal at all five sites, however, as Paul said, we've been experiencing a lot of challenges within the service over the last one to two years and that has led to a temporary change and you can see that on that chart there. It has meant that there has been some move from just five sites to, for breast for example, two sites. And the proposed stabilisation that we are looking at today is to consolidate that temporary change with perhaps a further change in the lung team to four sites instead of the five that are currently served. Next slide, please. So in developing this stabilisation phase that we're looking at, we've taken on board the feedback from patients and public and from staff to build these proposed models. We know from the work that Paul's done that patient safety and outcomes, that continuity of support that Paul's highlighted and travel and access are important. For this stabilisation phase, we're really focusing on development of those clinical teams so that we can have a more resilient service and that there can be cross-cover if there is gaps within teams, so the service can continue to be provided. So the reason for doing this consolidation is to ensure that we continue to have a safe service for patients and we're still able to provide some choice. And alongside that, we're exploring a more enhanced offer for virtual clinics, so moving not just from telephones but actually having a more state-of-the-art virtual video calling that would be perhaps supported by it within the hospital setting locally and a supported environment for patients. So we're exploring that as a way of mitigating some of the impact of this. Next slide, please. So obviously this does have an impact and we've been working hard to try to mitigate that. There's been an increase in the charitable transport available for patients, so there's more buses running from localities to where the oncologists are. What's been really important has been developing the support around for patients, so there's been, specialist cancer nurses have been travelling to some of the oncology clinics to support their patients where the patients are as well. And we've also put in some additional specialist nurses into the breast clinic to support that continuity of care that we know is so important. We have been able to identify a site with some very good parking, as that was something that was obviously important for patients when they're travelling. And we've been looking to adopt more of the non-face-to-face appointments to try to minimise that need for travel. Alongside that, we're also trying to develop more and more chemotherapy treatments. All of the places do deliver chemotherapy, but some offer more regimes than others and we're looking to try to reduce that variation, offer more treatments locally, so though patients may need to travel for their face-to-face appointments, their chemotherapy, which is the majority of the appointments, the treatment can be given locally. There's been a lot of work on recruitment and workforce development strategies, that's looking particularly at allied health professionals but also at the administrative support behind all of this. This is obviously more complex than the previous service, so looking at developing that as well. And work as well with the oncology teams so that the oncologist is doing what they need to do and their time is not taken up doing what they don't need to do and other roles could perhaps take on. So we've been developing advanced clinical practitioner roles, consultant pharmacy roles and clinical nurse specialist development. And improving operational working, obviously there are now more regular meetings between Western Park and Place to try to smooth out any hitches and to try and improve that communication across the region. Final slide, I think. So this is, as Emma said at the beginning, we'd like to ask just to note the approach and the co-production of the service model, the assurance processes and the progress to date. We ask that you support our proposed approach for stabilisation phase of this programme. We ask that you note the high level of patient and public involvement already achieved by the programme and the role it's played in our decision-making and indicate if you feel any further consultation needs to take place in this stabilisation phase. Thank you. Thank you, Julia and Paul. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much indeed. So members, no doubt we've got some questions, Jeff's champing at the bit to come in.
I just want to first of all crave a point for clarification on the chart that Judith has shown in terms of the five specialist cancer areas. On the lung one, it had a four-site model, one of which was Barnsley/ Rotherham. I'm just wondering if Judith can give me further clarification on what that means and whether it shouldn't just be five centers rather than Barnsley and Rotherham making one?
Thank you, Jeff. So that reflects the fact that we haven't quite worked that bit out. So we know that the team are very pressured in lung and it looks likely that we're going to need to consolidate probably onto one site, but whether that is Barnsley or Rotherham hasn't quite been worked through yet.
Thank you. Oh, is that a hand, Glynnis?
I do note the high level of engagement. I wondered if there was any documented evidence of engagement with vulnerable adults and how we did that.
Thank you for your time. So we produced the documentation in easy read for people with learning disabilities and we engaged with a dozen different organisations for people who wouldn't normally be engaged. Just a second, I'll tell you which those are. So we were lucky to get involvement from people, from women with Asian heritage. Forgive me, I haven't got the list in front of me at the moment. So the, I'll come back to you on that, I'll find it, I'll tell you in a second if that's okay. All that we've done is in the report, which is published on the website.
I think further to that question, I think we were keen to understand how much influence the responses from some of the harder to reach and harder to engage groups might have been. So because you're having more of perhaps more of a specialist conversation or bespoke conversation with those people, to what extent is the feedback from those conversations, how is it weighted if you like? So what kind of influence does that have on the outcome?
So we avoid weighting these things. We present it faithfully to the decision-makers, allowing them then to take that into account. So they, as part of the report, there is a special analysis of the information that came back in from each of those groups and a kind of consolidated analysis of that as well. That's presented separately and when we take that into account into the summary analysis, then that's where lots of the qualitative information comes from. So that real understanding of the problems that people have and the issues that they have and also the things that they like about the services as well, we ask them those things. It's, that information is presented. So again, we don't weight it as such from an analysis point of view, we present it faithfully to the decision-makers so that they can take it into account.
And are there any particular barriers or concerns that came out of those conversations? So if you're talking to people with learning disabilities, were there any particular considerations that came out of that or groups went with non-English as first language?
Yeah, so I think the one that came out most clearly was access to interpreters. So it's a frustration that often, particularly with referrals between different services and whatever else, that an interpreter isn't always immediately available until the service gets used to the fact that they need to book an interpreter as well. And obviously in that, then it's not always, you know, you're reliant on a second professional service coming into that at the same time. So there are some frictions or some difficulties there. But that was the main one that came across was the access to information and particularly access to interpreters for those consultant appointments.
And having identified that perhaps more than previously as an issue, is there an opportunity within the new proposed model to improve access to interpreters?
So the answer to that is that yes, there's an opportunity to do that and to take that into account.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you're absolutely right, there's an opportunity with it. I think the location of appointments, which is what's different with this at the moment, is not necessarily more or less of a barrier than the previous ways of working. But I think what's positive about looking at changing things is that it is an opportunity to look at things like that. So it's not, I wouldn't say the way that we're looking at things is better or worse than the previous way that things were, but like Paul says, it just gives you a way of, another opportunity to think about things, particularly when it's been highlighted in this way.
If I may, I can give you the groups now that we came to. So we had migrant action Barnsley and feels like home Barnsley, both of which working with migrants. We had Doncaster housing for young people, so we got young people involved there as well. We had the Afro-Caribbean community in Sheffield and the Asian Association in Chesterfield in North Derbyshire. The Aurora Wellbeing Centre, rural communities and older people. Again, the men's cancer group at the Afro-Caribbean Community Meeting in Sheffield. We had Asian women, we had Reach Up Youth in Sheffield, we had Ship Shape Health and Wellbeing in Sheffield, that's for Asian communities. And we had the Firdale Community Hub, which was South Asian people and Roma women as well. And the reason we were asking those kind of groups to get involved was because of the equality analysis that we did of who's presenting late and not, you know, using information about people not attending screening and those kind of things to make sure that that information that we heard from those people in the exercise so the service can plan to make sure that they get a better service.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for that. My question is a little bit more focused on understanding some of the root causes that initially led to the temporary model which you're now taking into the next phase. It seems, please do correct me if I'm wrong in any part because we're not, absolutely not the specialists. It seemed that from reading the document that the key issue has been the lack of oncologists and the lack of those specialisms. So there's huge demand and not enough of the people, the right skill sets to be able to respond. When I was reading the document, I could see some of the ways that you're trying to address that. So for example, looking at the wider multidisciplinary team, so not just the oncologist needs to respond to a patient, there could be a variety of other interventions. However, from the document, I didn't quite get what is the long-term response because we know we have a deficit model of doctors within the country and it's not just within oncology. And therefore this issue that you've now come up with essentially a more sustained solution to actually may not last very long if that capacity issue is not there. So do you have a more longer-term plan to A, either address getting more oncologists from somewhere or B, and maybe both, the idea that is there room within the NHS maybe around, within oncology to create new roles? So an example I would give would be around GPs and lower-level NHS practice around physician associates that was created purely out of the idea there was a gap and actually felt another role could nicely fit in. So just really maybe hearing your long-term perspective on this issue.
Yeah, absolutely. This has happened in a response to an issue and we're really keen that we don't lose sight of the long term. This is a temporary thing and what we need to do at the moment is stabilise so that we can really engage with some of those changes that you've just described. There is already an awful lot of allied health professionals working within oncology, there are consultant pharmacists, there are advanced radiotherapists, there are advanced nurses, but it is absolutely about expanding those roles. There are national plans, they have increased the number of oncology trainees nationally, but they still have trouble filling those jobs. So you're right, this is not a problem that is going to go away. So part of the work is absolutely about developing ways of working, bringing on those roles more and more, having more nurse-led chemotherapy regimes. All of this is part of the next, it's already started, but developing that even further is absolutely part of what we need to do.
I just wanted to raise another point for clarification in the first instance here. On page 13, the bottom paragraph refers to the evaluation panel who was consulted in terms of looking at the various clinical models that were being suggested at the time. I just wondered who served on the evaluation panel? Which organisations or individuals?
Sorry Geoff, I've printed it out but I've not numbered it. So we had a non, is this the non-surgical oversight group? Six point two, thank you. Thank you. Six point two, this one. Yes, so I think this refers to our non-surgical oversight group that we've had in place throughout this whole procedure and that has had representatives from Place, so Barnsley, Rotherham, Doncaster, Sheffield and Chesterfield on that.
So it was mainly represented from the Place organisations that you consult with. Did they all quite clearly back the Hob and Spoke model or was it very much a question of balancing that with another particular model?
I think the other models of leaving things as they were was not an option and again, nobody was keen to have a centralisation model, I think.
It's a question about the approach essentially is trying to address that A, patients waiting too long and there was lack of availability appointments in some areas. In terms of what you have proposed, in terms of your belief in your suggested way forward, are you able to assure us as a commission that actually this will meet those two primary issues of mitigating some of those? A, wait time issue and B, the variety of appointments that are available to residents and patients across South Yorkshire.
Thank you. So I think the work that we're doing is equalising wait times as much as, it's not built more oncologists as you've already identified. I think a lot of the ways of working are trying to mitigate those appointments and it's about making sure that we're offering an equitable service and then able to move forward so that we can increase that capacity. There has been some increased capacity put in as well, working alongside that. So at the moment, the capacity is, has been developed to try to match that demand, but it's an ongoing challenge. Emma?
I think, yeah, I think you're absolutely right to raise this is a national issue. It's not around resource or money, you know, if we could fund 10 tomorrow, we would. It's absolutely a workforce crisis and I think the North suffers far more than the South in this space. So I think, being honest with the commission, this is a very, you know, it's a very fragile situation, it's very fragile services. I think we're doing all we can across the five places to work together to come up with something that we feel will stabilise the situation. But you're absolutely right, we need to think, you know, about the next sort of 10, 20 years. We also need to make South Yorkshire a place people want to come and work because people aren't worked, you know, to death basically, because there's so much pressure on these services that we need an environment that clinicians want to come and work in and in a way that they're not being pulled from pillar to post. So part of our focus on the future is how do we make that multidisciplinary model, how do we equalise excess and how do we make those services less fragile? So I think there's still a lot of work to do, we're just partway in that journey. Thank you.
So I'm just going to follow up on that a little bit, so it's just a slightly different sort of angle on the same thing, but what about the new proposed model would be particularly attractive to the workforce? I mean, bearing in mind always that with the current situation of shortages, if we're making ourselves more attractive, we are pinching people from elsewhere in the system, which is not, that's not the ideal, I'm not advocating that. But what about this model longer term would be particularly attractive and really draw people to work here?
I mean, to your speak, but from a, I mean, this model necessarily isn't more attractive. This is about quality and safety and making sure that we can provide quality and safety to our patients currently. I think the new model is about actually how do we look at that multidisciplinary workforce? How do we look at that sort of difference site working, virtual etcetera? And how do we, you know, really become a centre that people want to work to? Because we're competing with Manchester, other areas that have loads of different technology. But I think, I mean, I'm fairly new to this part of the world, but you know Sheffield's always been a place that seems to have attracted, you know, loads of people and we're struggling to see that now in some specialties. So I think, you know, working with the universities, working with our peers, looking at what we can do nationally, this isn't going to be fixed overnight and I think that's another key thing, but that's just the managerial perspective. Julian may have more to add.
So I think, no, as Emma says, this isn't our end game, this is our, enabling us to stabilise so that we can then move forward. You know, we want to be aspirational in what we're doing for our patients and for our staff. In the short term, I think it's, previously we've had single-handed oncologists working in some of these centres and I think that is unappealing. So the fact that we're now building teams, I think is more appealing in this role, but to be honest, in terms of making things more appealing, it is more about developing those future models. So it's the next piece of work.
So it's page four, paragraph three in the mitigations. Whilst as a retired nurse, I absolutely applaud the extra clinical nurse specialists and advanced practitioners. I think it's really important that they don't work outside of their areas of clinical expertise because I think, you know, the possibility that that then becomes very unattractive for some individuals is always there and that they're used not in the right way and, you know, those roles become as unattractive as the ones that we're hoping to replace.
I couldn't agree more. I think there's no point transferring the burnout from one group to another, that's not what this is about at all. It's about building a team, it's about building a service, it's about making sure that everybody is working in a way that is most effective for the patient, but not, you know, I don't like that phrase that you hear, you know, working at top of licence. That's not something that I think is a good idea and I think you do work, but that's not all of your work. You can't, you know, there's no point transferring that burnout from one group to another, that's not going to achieve anything.
You won't be surprised if I'm going to go back to engagement of communities. We are a community representative, so I suppose that was always the heart of what we do here. I think first of all, I can see how you've gone out and you've put that additionality of understanding where you need to increase influence from, you know, voices that you don't ordinarily see maybe in the usual business. And then how some of that has gone into the service design, which you have identified from page eight. I think one's an observation is that through this task you've identified like who's missing. So that tells me that your mainstream services was per se, that was not their strength of reaching that diversity of the communities that live in South Yorkshire. So A is an assurance that you've essentially gone out of your way now to say, do you know what, we've not heard from this group or this group? How do we incorporate that? Is how do you now mainstream that as a cultural approach around engagement, involvement I think is fundamental. The other thing I want to do, which is more of a question, the things that have been raised by the public and patients through their feedback are very, they're not absolutely about the intervention itself, about the medical intervention, which I thought was interesting. I don't know if it did come up, but the numbers maybe were not as high. So the focus on is almost the things around it that make the medical intervention, I suppose, higher quality or that's more accessible. Do you think, is that because people don't feel confident enough to respond on that? I hear patients all the time, oh, I wanted to have this treatment, I wanted to have that and I didn't get it. So it was, it was A, what do you feel why that was missing? And B, do you have an understanding of that other aspect of care, which is the core part of the service, which is the medical intervention? part of the service, which is the medical intervention?
I was on mute, sorry about that. The, yes, absolutely, the. That learning is carried forward, so the ICB started reviewing their strategy last week and were taking that information and, and other things into, into account, so that's, absolutely, I can assure you that's, that's happening. There was comment on the, on the, on the service, it was, it was largely positive in the, in the groups that we, in the groups that we talked to. Obviously, there are, so things that the people, the people mentioned were the, their, how good they thought the speed with which people were referred were, and how quickly they then got treatment. They were, they commented on the friendly staff, they really felt that they were listened to in those clinical, those clinical environments, and they were effusive about the support provided by the specialist council nurses. So lots of, lots of, lots of good comments around that. They're, the general stuff that came from, sorry, the stuff that came from those specific groups that we targeted, really reflected the challenges that were expressed in the, in the survey and, and in the online meetings that we, we did to, to discuss this. So they were down to appointments running on time, there was particularly from two of the groups that were, we worked with, with Asian women, they both expressed frustration around cancellations and appointments being moved, but that's part of the challenge of the, was part of the challenge of the, of the service. So. Yeah, sorry, I've run out of the, run out of the question there. The, so there were some specifics, but largely, and perhaps reassuringly, what we found by, by asking those, by targeting those people specifically for involvement, was that the experience of the service was largely the same. There was the issue, as I said before, with, with interpreters, but yeah, the arc of the feedback is pretty similar.
And just from a counter alliance perspective, we are really starting to look at much more of a targeted approach now, so you're absolutely right, we know across South Yorkshire there are, are patients that are attending, you know, at stage three and four, which is the later stages, and we need to do something about that. So alongside this work, we're actually doing much more of a targeted campaign around prevention, you know, targeting the areas we know where people present late, there are, you know, huge differences in the outcomes that patients have, you know, down to the postcode etcetera, and we need to do something about that. So this, this isn't the only bit of work we're doing, we need to really start to make this, you know, an ongoing thing rather than just kind of, we do it, you know, we kind of show things up when we're doing bits of consultation, but actually we need to be doing this all the time and really trying to improve and equal the outcomes so that everybody in South Yorkshire gets that same opportunity to get the best care.
I think I just had one more little thing, and then we'll look at the recommendations. So I just wanted to refer back to, it's page one of the report that you sent us, which is to, part two, the introduction, where it touches on the number of outpatient appointments, which are virtual. Just wanted to ask, I mean, we've asked questions around this a little bit before, but I just, I just wanted to ask how that compares to national figures, and is it something you consider desirable to see that number of outpatients virtually? And is it something that patients see as desirable? Or is that more of a sticking cluster for now as part of the stabilisation? Is that something you would look to change in the future? Is it a suck it and see kind of thing at the moment?
Thank you, I think, Emma, and apologies, I don't actually know, I don't know if you know if there's a particular figure nationally. I think it really varies depending on specialties. I think the thing with virtual is that it needs to be quality, doesn't it? And I think patients need to be given a choice, so some patients might say, do you know what, I'm very happy with a phone call this time. Because I know it's straightforward, I know the person that's phoning me. I think it's about having those relationships, about making sure it's a quality consultation, whether it's face-to-face or virtual. So I think you're right, you know, a number on its own doesn't say a huge amount, we need to know, we need to be confident that that is a quality consultation and that it's a patient choice to do that. And sometimes we do get patients that say, I'd rather not come, and I don't mind, you know, you might say, well, it could be bad news, and they're gonna, that's fine, I'd much rather be sat in my own home and receive that news, or vice versa. So I think, and there is something from a clinical aspect as well about you can't keep not seeing people, you need to see people, you know, you need to eyeball people now and then to make sure that they are. That they are well, that there's not things that you're missing. So it is, it's a nuanced thing, I think, is probably the answer to that, and something that we need to be making sure that we're evaluating moving forward.
So that's part, is that definitely part of a monitoring plan to evaluate how that works out over time, and hearing views from the clinical side and the patient side as well?
So there are certainly plans to expand this and have this as an enhanced thing, so looking at developing more. I mean, ideally perhaps as a sort of an area within a hospital where there is a suite where you could have a nurse present, you could have a video present, and all of that would be evaluated, so that would be part of an evaluation process, if we're introducing things like that, that it is. It is the right thing.
Last little thing just on that, so one of the top priorities from the consultation feedback, the engagement feedback was. How did people put it? They want to see the same person each time. So how much is that part of the virtual clinic? The virtual clinic setup, is that, is someone going to see the same person each time in that scenario?
I think it has a potential to facilitate it more, being the same person. I think. It's always going to be difficult to always see the oncologist, for example, so it is making sure that, that we have those lines of communication, that we have that team ways of working for patients, and that they feel that there's a continuity of care. Even if it's not necessarily exactly the same person each time, that there's, that it's that wraparound experience, and where. Possible and where it's important that it is the same person, you know, there are some difficult conversations to be had, and that needs to come from someone who's familiar.
Thank you. I'm gonna take us through the recommendations now at this point, so. The committee is asked to note the approach to co-production of the service model assurance process and progress to date, obviously we've asked a lot of questions around that, so we, we do note the approach to the co-production. Is there anything particular that members would like to draw out of that, that we'd like to hear more about in the future?
Sorry, is that my bit you want me to say, the consultation bit? I think the key thing is, and I think you've already kind of responded to it, is for ourselves as a committee to be assured that continued commitment to high-quality engagement and involvement, and ensuring that part of the equality's duty, that that is, that engagement is inclusive of diversity of South Yorkshire.
So I think if you can take that as, as a recommendation from the committee, that we'd very much like to hear more about that in future reports. Councillor?
Yeah, just to follow on to the point that's been made, it's very important because mostly the patients in Barnsley have to travel, that we do make sure that the Barnsley, that the feedback we get from the patients in Barnsley is very much central to the delivery of future service. It's got to be patient-centered driven, as it were, yeah.
I think we would, we'd expect to continually evaluate this model as well, so, you know, if it goes, and what feedback are we getting, how can we change things if we need to? So again, this isn't like, it's not like the end, it's almost the beginning, really. I think, as I said before, we need to build on this work, we need to ensure we're meeting our equality duties as well, and in terms of EQIA and things like that, so that will all be built into this process. I think, you know, what I was saying before is, there is no easy fix to this, and that's the, I think that's the kind of honesty we wanted to bring today, that we are working, we are appreciative of the inequalities that exist, but we're also realistic about the workforce pressures that we face, and so it's how do we kind of balance all those things to make sure that patients right now get the best possible quality and access to care they can?
Thanks, Emma, I think that's really important because we have to remember the point we've started from, with all of this is services being unviable, so you've, you know, you've firstly created a pathway to becoming viable again, and, but that was the starting point, wasn't it? So important to remember that. So I think in terms of noting the approach to the co-production, you've, you've taken a note, I think, that we'd like to see more in terms of a sort of more culture of continuous improvement and that feedback loop, and particularly with equalities in mind. So members were asked to support the proposed service model for the stabilisation phase of the programme. Is that, is that a nod? Yeah, and support the need for consolidation of some onsite locations to support workforce capacity and provide service resilience. Yeah, and finally to note the high level of patient and public involvement already achieved by the programme, and the role it has played in the decision-making, and indicate if, if the committee expects further consultation to take place in this stabilisation, stabilisation phase of the programme. And I think there, again, we're referring to councillor Seams' notion there of the patient feedback loop, I think rather than a further consultation exercise at this stage, because I think none of us wants to hold up the work that's, that's happened, and we don't want to hold back at the process of moving to a new, a new phase of this. So rather than a formal consultation exercise, which would create a time barrier, wouldn't it? I think what we'd like to recommend is that this is more about establishing that robust feedback process and a culture of continuous improvement, and that perhaps you come back to the committee informally, if that's easier, with a plan for how that assurance and service user feedback and clinician feedback will be built in. I think we'd be satisfied with that, rather than the formal consultation, looking at members for a nod, yeah. And so, and then perhaps if we were to receive a report back to the committee after six months of this next phase being in operation. So that we can receive some monitoring and a progress report at that stage. Is that acceptable to everybody? Yeah?
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for your questions today, really appreciate it, and your support, thank you.
Very grateful for your time today, thank you, it's been very thorough, really appreciate it, thank you. I think, would members like to grab another warm drink quickly before we go on to part two? Lovely warm. Right, we're welcoming Richard Parker to present to us on the next item of business, which is the new orthopaedic centre in Mexborough. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. So, so yes, members, I'm here today on behalf of myself and Richard Jenkins, who's the chief executive at Barnsley and Rotherham Teaching Hospitals, to introduce members to the Mexborough elective orthopaedic centre of excellence. Next slide, please. So the next slide is just a picture of me, but I'm here, so you'll have seen it, so next one, please. So the Mexborough Centre is a collaborative piece of work that was undertaken this year following a bid for central funding from the national pot of money that was made available for increasing capacity to recover from the effects of the pandemic in elective surgical specialties, and also to provide diagnostic treatment centres in communities. Mexborough has developed a couple of bids, one for the diagnostic centre and one, as it says on the slides, for the elective orthopaedic centre. The reason that we chose to concentrate work at Mexborough was the principle within the scheme that during winter months particularly, some surgical specialties are detrimentally affected by winter pressures. So when we come under pressure for medical admissions, and if that pressure exceeds our medical bed bases, acute trusts often have to cancel elective surgery, and that's done on a priority basis, where we prioritise urgent and emergency work, cancer services, and patients who've waited the longest, but the impact of the pandemic meant that there was a number of specialties that had waited considerable amounts of time, so it became more difficult for us on that prioritisation journey, and orthopaedic patients lost out, and therefore their procedures through the winter months were often cancelled and rearranged, and the impact of that is that their waits are extended further. So the proposal that we put in met the national criteria to undertake this work on what are called cold sites, i.e. sites that don't have accidents and emergency units, and therefore are not relying on those facilities to be able to deal with winter pressures. And the Mexborough Hospital site is primarily used by Doncaster and Bassett World Hospitals as a site where we undertake day case surgery, but we have rehabilitation services for stroke and general rehabilitation, some outpatient, as well as a minor injuries unit, but being a minor injuries unit doesn't admit patients because there are no emergency wards there, so at the moment, the bed stock is primarily around our rehab services. So the bid that we put in jointly as the three trusts, we were successful with, and we received fourteen point nine million pounds of funding from NHS England to develop the service, and as the slide indicates, and I believe members have received information of it, the centre is now scheduled to open on the fifteenth of January this year, and I'll take you through the timeline for the build of that particular scheme, with that absolute concentration on elective orthopaedic surgery. Be really helpful to the three trusts this winter, because clearly the challenges of winter are starting, and, and again, those impacts that I've talked about were likely to take place. We clearly have got challenges of workforce at the moment in a number of specialties, and members have just talked through some of the implications of that in one service. And what we want to do this winter is, our three trustees, to maintain our emergency orthopaedic work, because when the weather gets cold, we do see a significant increase in what's called trauma, in that patients who have fallen, suffered fractures of various bones, usually presenting larger numbers during the winter months, and sometimes that in itself can reduce our elective capacity. So we want to have the capacity in the acute hospitals to be able to provide those trauma services in a timely manner whilst maintaining our elective capacity, and it will be really helpful on that. As the slide indicates, once fully opened, the Mexborough Centre would be able to deal with about two thousand two hundred orthopaedic cases a year, which is about forty percent of the waiting list. But as members will be aware, the waiting list does vary by referrals, and at the moment, orthopedics has got some of the longest wait times still within our services, so this extra capacity in the short term will help us to accelerate the reduction of waiting times in orthopedics. The model that's been chosen is a model around working forty-eight weeks of the year on five days a week, and obviously aiming to use the two operating theatres to maximum capacity. It's also based around achieving what are called the GURF standards, so these are national quality and outcome standards, getting it right. So these are national quality and outcome standards, getting it right first time or GRFed. And the model is designed to try and hit them in all of the different ways in which they're described, which will be really, really beneficial, I think, for our patients and the patients we serve. The key point, I think, for members is that this is not a replacement for, so it's not the intention to reduce or close any orthopaedic services in Barnsley, Rotherham or Doncaster. It's additional capacity. And as additional capacity, patients will have choice. They can choose to stay within their normal district general hospital capacity. They can choose on choice as now. And one of their choices will be to receive care at MEOC. Clearly, you know, patients may have different reasons for different choices and we respect that. But what this is, is additional capacity to be able to reduce those waiting times. Next slide, please. So the next slide, when it comes up, is just an illustration for members in terms of the distances between the district general hospitals in Barnsley, Rotherham and Doncaster to the Mexborough Centre. Mexborough is served by train lines and by public transport, but as per the previous slide, many people come by car, so there is a good road network there. But clearly it will remain a choice. We won't be mandating this as a service for patients, we'll be offering it as a choice. But we do expect, because of those quality and outcomes and that certainty around the date we give for operations in the main being honoured, that patients will probably choose this because they can arrange their social and other support and their work arrangements around the fact that it's very, very unlikely that we'll cancel that date once it's been given, which is a real positive to them. Next slide, please. So this slide hopefully has a link and the link is just a time lapse. What this is illustrating, if it doesn't, and I noticed that the pack has various sort of images of this in development, is that the actual area in the building has been built using modern methods of construction, which meant that from the original approval of the scheme to its availability to be operational is a number of months. And the sort of video is drone footage of the crane that was used to put in place the various building blocks. So the major blocks were built off-site to the specification that we gave. And we were responsible for putting the footings in, so that was earlier in this year, around March, April time. And then the crane brings the various elements, which the construction staff then put into place. So the top is where the ventilation is that supports the operating theatres and the lower level is where the operating theatres, theatre recovery and the ward area will be. The ward area is next to the theatres. The reason for that is it's designed to be efficient. So in most hospitals, district generals and others, the operating theatres are often some distance between the wards. All that travel time reduces the amount of time that we have to operate or to facilitate the procedures. So by building and co-locating them, we can be as efficient and effective as we can be to use what is a very, very valuable resource. It's, these are some of the most expensive and valuable resources we have, so using them as wisely as we can is really, really important for us. Next slide, please. The next slide, when it comes up, is illustrating the scheme in itself is, as I've indicated in its final stages, so this is members of the senior teams in the various trusts visiting the site. The actual next phase of staff being able to walk around and people being able to see it is on the 18th of December, when it's formally open, there's a ribbon cutting session on that point in time. And then we go into the final phase of handover. And as I said, the current schedule is the 15th of January. Because it is winter and because of the challenges of winter and because of the issues I've already talked about, about maintaining trauma services, what we're using for the initial stage is an in-sourcing model. So what we're working with is a company that provide theatre services and theatre staff so that we're not going to move staff from the host trusts, because at this point in time, we're still recruiting to the formal establishment. We continue with recruitment and staff are beginning to come into post, but we're not currently fully established. And as I said, rather than denuding the base hospitals, we're going to use an in-source model for the first few months. As we recruit, the number of staff that we in-source reduces until such time as we've got a consistent workforce working at MEOC providing the services. Next slide, please. So this is just a view inside as the inside is developing. So this is a view of the link areas between the wards and departments, the operating theatres. The operating theatre itself, or one of the two, is the top left of the picture as we're looking at it with the gentleman stood in that gap. That's where the operating theatre doors are and these are the corridors between the wards and the departments. Next slide, please. The outside, the facade will look like that once it's completed. And as I said, we're nearing that stage now. And clearly we expect it to be as impressive inside as it will hopefully look outside. Next slide, please. The key benefits, as I've already indicated to members, is that it's a ring-fenced elective bed capacity. And we would normally cancel something in the region of 500 cases a year in orthopaedics, which we're aiming obviously to reduce as near to zero as possible. And as I've indicated, a lot of that tends to happen around the winter period. And, you know, we really do think this is hugely beneficial in people planning their lives and in helping us to reduce the waiting times. It is designed, or is those best practices, and some of those best practices now for orthopaedic patients, even patients undertaking hip and knee surgery, is that they are able to go home on the day of surgery and/or the next day for the vast majority of patients now. When I started, I'm a nurse by background, when I started my nursing career, patients were nursed on bedrest for 10 days with what was called a Charlie abduction pillow. The days have moved now and patients are having day surgery for orthopaedic hip and knee replacements. And I think in the future, some of the developments will be around robotic surgery in orthopaedics, which is really taking off nationally and across the world. And I think you will see that. And with having a centre of excellence, we hope that we will be able to provide those sorts of services locally. We are intending that we'll have standard operating procedures so that we are running effectively and efficiently for the reasons I've indicated. And we do hope that the site is a good choice for the communities we serve and that the actual unit itself goes from strength to strength. So I think that's the final slide, if I'm correct. And then I'll happy to stop there, Chair, and I'm very happy to answer any questions committee members may have.
Thank you very much indeed, Richard. councillor Ennis.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Chair. I know this hospital very well, having represented Mexborough for over 13 years in Parliament. And I know the value that it has, the community value that the hospital provides to Mexborough. People in Mexborough are really proud of this hospital. And I think this facility is going to enhance that reputation and community ownership of the local community. As you know, Richard, though, Mexborough is at the junction between Barnsley, Rotherham, Doncaster. The border with Barnsley is less than a mile from the hospital. Of course, Barnsley border is on that side of Mexborough. The part of east Barnsley which is closest to Mexborough is the poorest, the Durn. And we've got the ice levels, unemployment and ill health, et cetera, in the Durn. And we've got the lowest percentage of car ownership in the Durn as well. And that is my main problem in looking at this facility, because obviously the hospital site is out on limb. It's a mile from the interchange. Most of the buses don't go past this facility, they go into the interchange. And I know there are plans to actually provide passenger transport from the interchange to the hospital site, which I think is imperative, because I think people in the east of Barnsley will look at this facility and want it as their first choice option, rather than going to Barnsley or Rotherham or wherever. This will be the first choice option, so long as they can get there. And I'm not really thinking about people who've got cars like myself now. I'm thinking about people who are dependent on public transport. So I don't know if you want to cover that particular aspect, Richard.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. The reality for these sorts of patients, though, is that you would split that into two, because if you're coming in for orthopaedic surgery, then obviously we're not expecting your journey home, certainly not home, to be based upon public transport, because you've had surgery, if you've had a hip and knee replacement, it's major surgery. So what we would be doing at the pre-assessment service, where patients come to be worked up for surgery, is we would expect to discuss transport with them, for them and their families, because obviously I think for families it's slightly different, because, you know, people would want their relatives and friends to visit them if they're staying in for a considerable period of time. But the answer to that one is probably also tied to the model, in that what we're not expecting here is long lengths of stay, because the reality is, is that the surgery should be now undertaken with relatively short lengths of stay, day case in the main, if not day cases, 24 hours, if not 24 hours, a limited amount of time. If there are any complications, then it's clear that that would probably be managed by the patient being transferred to their local district general hospital, because although we don't expect complications, they do occur and patients will transport. And from the Mexborough site, we do have the bus that is supported by the Fred and Anne Green legacy that allows drop-offs on the way, but it currently concentrates on the journey between Mexborough and Doncaster. But I think that's one of the things that we'll keep under review, because the other thing to remember is, is if patients don't choose here, then their nearest hospital may be even further away with multiple bus journeys. So I think it's about us responding to patients' needs, responding to relatives' needs and making sure that it's fit for purpose.
Can I just quickly come back, Ruth, on this point? I painted a very negative picture about the low car ownership in Barnsley. The fact of the matter is, Mexborough is surrounded by former mining communities. And many of them are still very close-knit mining communities and they have large families attached to the villages. So a lot of these potential patients who haven't got cars, a lot of them have got relatives who will help. And it's important that when we have those pre-assessment sessions, we see what the capacity is for a 70, 80-year-old bloke like me to actually get a relative to take him in.
Yeah, absolutely. And some of the issues that you have to discuss with pre-assessment is if you're having your procedure on a day case basis and you have a general anxiety, one of the requirements is you do have somebody at home to support you. So that is part of a comprehensive pre-assessment service, because day case doesn't suit everybody. It suits a lot of people because they want to be back in their own home, but you've got to have good pain relief, you've got to have good network of support, you know, and you've got to have transport. So that is really about our pre-assessment service is working for all. I think Mexborough was chosen because of its unique location, because the sort of slide illustrated it, but it's a mile to the Barnsley postcode, but it's 200 yards to the Rotherham postcode, because of the top of the road it's based upon, that's Rotherham. And actually, if you look to the slide, Mexborough in itself is closer to the Barnsley and Rotherham district generals in the main than it is to Doncaster. But that's where its uniqueness comes in. But in the last few, the last year or two, I think we've developed the Mexborough site considerably from where it was in terms of the CDC is now there, the MEOC is there, we've obviously built upon the rehab centre. There's some significant and exciting developments for the rehab centre. We're expecting to be able to put in a rehabilitation robotic service very soon. That business case is being considered today, so if it's approved, there will be a robotic rehab service. Because remember, in orthopaedics, those first stages of being able to walk post your replacement, well, it's actually got purpose-built gymnasium and rehab services just behind the centre and our physios and orthies will be using that for the patients. So, you know, from our point of view, we're really pleased and excited by the expansion and development of the Mexborough service. And I think that imparts a bit of a testament to Fred and Anne Green's legacy, because without the support of the legacy, a lot of those developments wouldn't have happened.
Thanks. I'm just going to follow up on councillor Ennis's question, what you've just said about the rehab, actually, but tying in with the issue of access for people without cars. So what you're saying there is there are a lot of services on site, that sounds fantastic, quite enhanced services for rehab, but that would mean then someone coming back and forth quite a lot post-operative? So they've gone home and then they're coming back to the site for rehab, no?
No. So the rehab services that are on site currently are primarily aimed at our stroke and general rehab services, because the, a few years ago, members may remember that the model for stroke services in South Yorkshire was based upon two hyperacute stroke units, one in Sheffield, one in Doncaster. And Doncaster's rehabilitation services for its patients are based around Mexborough Hospital and the Fred and Anne Green Rehabilitation Centre. But as a rehabilitation centre, it has the ability to provide pre-operative facilities and education for patients, because they're often supported by a pre-op group that sort of says what to expect after the operation and what exercises will benefit their progress. And on the first day post-surgery, for safety reasons, you do want to assess that the patient's mobility is appropriate for their stage of recovery. And obviously that can include things like stair assessments and others, because over time, those become important measures for discharge. So it won't be a primary rehabilitation centre in that sense, because it's doing hip and knee replacements, shoulder and butt and ankle surgery. But it does have the opportunity to do pre-assessment in terms of supported and post-recovery classes. So patients might want to come back in a few weeks, a few months to be assessed and also, you know, get peer support with their mobility and other questions. So the unit has the ability to do both.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, to stay following off the Chair, that I think this is a great intervention, particularly A, the partnership working between the hospitals, and B, the fact that this is a huge issue for us around the wait times. I think some of your documents state at least 52 weeks wait times for a lot of patients and the majority of them tend to come under orthopaedic procedures. So to tackle that, I think this is much welcome investment for our local communities. I'm just wanting to understand, is this a short-term thing? Is this the view that this particular facility, you're going to continue to maintain that for a number, like, I didn't quite get how long is this for? Is this just because we've got some immediate issues and because we're way past, is it the 18-week usual wait time for a procedure? And 52 weeks is way past that? So it's just having some idea of the length of this facility? And is this a long-term way of working to pick up maybe other acute issues long-term? And for us to work in a more partnership way about tackling them?
Thank you, councillor. So although I describe this unit under the modern methods of construction and to people it might look like a prefabricated building, it's actually got a lifetime that's expected to be 40 to 50 years. So it's a building that we're expecting to be maintained as an operating theatre for a considerable period of time. One of the key questions for us really is that that model of undertaking surgical procedures electively on cold sites is a model that has huge traction, because a hot acute site with an A and E on it can sometimes have lots of challenges in terms of that split role it has of doing elective procedures, emergency procedures. So we're quite interested to see whether it develops as expected. And if it does, then the next stage may well be to expand it for other specialties, because if it does what we think it will do and the patients in themselves think it's a great service, then we might well expand it and expand it in a way that supports other elective procedures where their risks and complications are less than some procedures, because obviously the more complex the surgery in terms of things like, you know, bowel and cancer surgery, you probably do need the support of the acute hospital for some elective procedures. You can do them safely and to a high standard in an elective surgical centre. So that it's a response that will be beneficial to orthopaedics now, but actually, if it does work, then we would probably look to other specialties using the service and possibly expand it. In terms of waiting times, then the pre-pandemic standard, the national standard, was 92% of patients were expected to be treated within 18 weeks. And in the main, the South Yorkshire trust were really good at delivering that. So in the main, the South Yorkshire trust hit that standard. Coming out of the pandemic, then clearly the length of wait times had expanded considerably. And for orthopaedics, there were many patients who waited more than two years for surgery. So in the last year, the acute trusts in South Yorkshire have been concentrating on reducing the wait times for elective orthopaedics. And at the moment, the standard for the end of this year is to have no patients waiting more than 65 weeks. And we think we'll hit that. The standard for next year is to have no patients waiting longer than 52 weeks. And we're looking or working hard to try to hit that. And that's where this centre comes in for that particular group. And the reason orthopaedic patients have always tended to have longer wait times is, A, it's an aging population and demands rise. But B, when we assess things like winter activity and pressures and we use that scale of clinical urgency, often orthopaedic patients don't have that clinical urgency that some other procedures will have. And therefore, they're disproportionately affected by things like winter cancellations. But this unit, we're expecting that to be corrected. Because obviously, we're expecting this capacity to be provided, you know, five days a week, 48 weeks of the year. And if you've given a date for this, then it will be very, very exceptional. Be related to things like short term sickness absence, if your surgeon is here on the morning of your surgery, that might happen. But otherwise, we're expecting the procedures to be done at the time we promise them.
I can see the absolute advantages around a cold site. But given recruitment and retention currently, how confident can you be about the numbers of staff in place on January 15?
So we have a working action plan that includes the workforce model. So each week, we know who we've recruited and what their start date is. So we know now how many people will be with us as substantive members of staff when the unit opens. And then there is a continuing plan of recruitment to allow us to get to the full establishment, which I think from memory is about 48 all time equivalents that we're looking for in a range of different areas. So theatre nurses, ward nurses, OTs, physios and anaesthetists. We've pre-recruited surgeons, so we've got the surgeons in place now to be able to support this, which is, which is good. So Doncaster, for instance, has appointed two surgeons this year. One was an additional surgeon to support this unit from the first, you know, well, originally from the first week in January, it's now the second. So it's a moving plan, but the plan is moving forward and we are filling the vacancies. But one of the things about these units and why I referenced Gervt and others is that if we can hit the actual expected outcomes and productivity and efficiency, if that meant that we were able to do one more operation on each operating list, then the number of operating lists we need reduce. Because we're actually doing the work through less theatre sessions. So if we can become efficient in this unit and use every minute of operating time to its maximum capacity, overall, it may reduce the demand for some of those services. So we may need less theatre sessions, we may need less support staff in theatres at that time. We clearly wouldn't need less surgeons because we've got to do it. But there are some groups that would absolutely benefit from that. And I think it's that benefit that will help us with some of the other challenges of productivity, efficiency, effectiveness, but also value for money and costs. Because the fixed cost of doing an operation is the things that we've seen today. It's the operating theatre, it's the light, it's the ventilation, it's a surgeon and anaesthetist and a team. But if we can put one more case on every list, then the cost of that operation is just reduced by, let's say, a third. And therefore, we are using taxpayers' money and our resources to the maximum effect. And that's where recruiting substantive staff comes. Because if you recruit substantive staff and you're not relying on bank and agency, then that becomes a team and the team become effective and the team deliver the outcome. So we want to move as quickly as possible away from the in-source model to a substantive team. But we also think that this will give them a better experience. So as conscious of some of your questions to the previous presentation, the opportunity I think you have with these services is that if you are an orthopaedic team and you want to undertake orthopaedic operations, it's very frustrating in winter if you can't work because you can't get your patients. If we can work here and we work efficiently and your list starts at half a stay and finishes at five o'clock and you go home on time and you're not being asked to stay over, then they are some of the indirect things that I think make the workforce more content in their roles. And so these are the sorts of things that may indirectly allow us to recruit and retain more than we've done in the past. Because we're providing a working environment that's state of the art. For Doncaster, I would say these theatres are our best theatres, state of the art operating theatres. And that's the sort of thing that indirectly will help us, I think, with recruitment and retention.
Just going to ask some questions that, well, a question that's come in from a member of the public prior to the meeting, who's just raised some concerns about the transport details in appendix A. Now, I don't know anything about the local bus services myself, so I'm just going to read what the member of the public has put as a concern just about that information. So they're saying that the transport details are incorrect and could these be checked and corrected where necessary? So notably, there's, and we're on page 20 of the report, if people want to look at that. The X20, X78, 87 and 87A do not serve Montague is the comment there. And in the appendix, it's stated that Montague Hospital is served directly by those services. So if that can be thoroughly checked out and corrected if necessary. And then if, you know, if it is the case that those buses don't serve Montague directly, then obviously then looking at some mitigation for that. You know, you'd be looking at additional, possibly additional patient transport capacity to address that, I guess. They comment that the X78 doesn't even serve Meksborough. So I don't know if that's just a, some typographical error in the number of the bus or whether there's just some bad information there, I don't know. The 87 and 87A don't serve it either. If you were to catch one of them, you would find yourself leaving Doncaster in the opposite direction to Meksborough. Additionally, the 621, which is mentioned in the appendix as one of the buses that serves the interchange from a Connisborough bus. The 621 is a school bus running in the wrong direction. And then they comment that the N6 is not even open to the general public, that's an Auckland bus. So could those be checked out thoroughly? And could we get some information back as quickly as possible to the committee? Just to verify what is happening with those bus services?
Absolutely. I mean, as you probably answered, I'm not an expert in terms of the transport system. But it does sound like the person who raised the question probably is. So from a practical point of view, yes, we'll absolutely have a look at that. In the main, my answer to previous councillor's question around when the transport becomes important, it's an important issue, I think, potentially pre-operatively and for visitors. But for the reasons I've sort of indicated, we're not expecting patients to rely on bus services to get home post-operatively. I think that's down to our pre-assessment and our services. But I do think it's important that relatives and visitors can get there reasonably easily and certainly as easily as they can get to their district general hospitals where the procedure would be normally undertaken. But we'll definitely check the buses because it's important. Because we're about to make up posters and information for patients visiting outpatients, part of the choice. So we absolutely need to get it right because we don't want people ending up in a completely different place. So, yeah.
Can I just check as well about the, just about, you know, people who don't have access to a car? So is the options available to patients, you're saying about the pre-op consultation? Those options open to patients to use charitable transport or hospital transport? They are going to be put as part of the offer to the patient in that initial choice of where they're going to receive their care presumably. So what I'm getting at is that there's not going to be any individual patient who is disadvantaged by not having access to a car? And that those options will be put to them fully as part of that choice? So there's no hint of a two tier system?
No, that would be our expectation. Because as we sort of said in the presentation, patients do have that choice. They can remain and have their procedure at their own hospital, their nearest district general, which is where it would have been carried out prior to this. They have other choices under the national patient choice system, PITBAS and others. But this is about the services we provide at Barnsley, Rotherham and Doncaster. And we should be able to have a conversation with them about the opportunities and advantages of that. But what one advantage is will not be is a differential waiting list. So you won't be operated on quicker by going to Meksborough than you would at the moment. Because it's important we don't make any inequalities worse by opening a service. What we want to do is offer choice and patients choose based upon some of those sorts of factors. So the assessment would normally include transport. And there's an eligibility criteria for things like ambulances. And then there is that conversation that my previous answer said about if you have your surgery and it's going to be day case, we do need to know that somebody's going to be with you in the evening. And we obviously need to have the conversation about how you'll get home. If you're eligible for transport, then obviously the normal means of transport would be available. So we do have some charitable support, we have taxi support, we have ambulance support, both from Yorkshire Ambulance Service and also from private ambulance services that we use to support discharge of patients. But in the main, and if the cars are suitable, then patients will obviously have the option to go and buy a car as well. But it should be part of the conversation at pre-assessment. And clearly, you know, we need to make sure patients understand that. Because this facility should not be dictated by whether you do or don't have a car.
Thanks very much, Richard. I think that's the assurance that we want to hear is that, you know, there's no differentiation in accessing your surgery faster at one centre than another. That's, I think that's a good assurance to hear. Any other questions, members? So it's not clear from the report what the expectation of the committee is in terms of noting anything? But I'm going to ask members if they have any recommendations that we'd like to put forward at this stage. This is the first time that this has come under scrutiny in this context and in a formal scrutiny setting. So it may be that members have things that they would like to hear back on or follow up on at a future update.
I mean, I would welcome update partly because of your response to my particular question. Because if this approach is successful, then we have to know and understand what successful means. Is that it will be applied to other procedures? So therefore, I think it's important that we understand and benchmark it. Is it a true success for local communities? Particularly since yourselves and the other trusts have a view of, a long term view of this way of working.
So I think we're asking to understand what success, what success means in this context? And to receive some future monitoring of a measure against that success benchmark? Yeah? Thank you.
I would suggest that the success will be things like patient satisfaction, choice of the service, as well as have we the outcome that we're expecting? So the outcome we're expecting is to see a steady reduction in the orthopaedic waiting times as a result of this. And on cancellations, those are the primary qualitative things we will be measuring. Are we doing the procedures? Are we doing as many, if not more, procedures per operating list than we do in our standard operating theatres? Are we reducing waiting times or reducing cancellations and is patient satisfaction good?
So I think, members, would we like to sort of have those expectations set down and then receive a report back on them? I think that's the bit that's not quite clear from the report is, you know, what those performance indicators are and how they're going to be monitored and then how we might receive information on that in the future. And maybe you could suggest a time scale for a suitable point in time that you might report back to us and give us a useful update on that?
So not necessarily by my attendance, because you may not want to see me again. But I would suggest six months and then a year and then we can review it a year. Because in six months, we'll know have we set it up and is it doing what we expected it to do? And then a year, we'll be able to have a full year's activity. So January next year, we'll be able to open a year. And so you might suggest sort of six months and then 12 months. And at that point in time, hopefully, it's doing what it says on the tin. And there may be some thoughts on next steps.
Thank you. Agreed? Yeah, that's really useful. Thank you very much. All done? Yeah, well, I think we're happy. Thank you ever so much for coming today and presenting very thoroughly on that. And very best of luck as you go towards opening the facility. Thank you. Thanks very much indeed, Richard, for coming. Thank you. Members, we just have our work programme to discuss. So if we can quickly do that, we have just six minutes to complete what we're doing today. So we've just got our work programme item. Deborah, do you want to take us through the work programme? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Essentially, what we've proposed, the officers have consulted with each of our individual members and between us have come up with this proposed schedule of meetings, which is a quarterly set of meetings. We've got outstanding items scheduled in that we know that are coming. So for example, at the next meeting, the Yorkshire Ambulance Service strategy item. The committee had expressed an interest in looking at dentistry. But there is also at the same time a regional event taking place. So we've put in there that the, that we would look at a kind of progress since that regional event in the June. And obviously, we've just received two items today that are going to require six monthly monitoring. So those will be added into the work programme as well. So it's a rolling programme of quarterly meetings if members are happy with that proposal.
We're happy with everyone's nodding. That's great. Thanks very much, Deborah. In terms of what we've just agreed there with the Meksborough Orthopaedic Centre. So if we're looking at a six month review after the unit has opened in January, that would take us to July. We don't have a meeting scheduled for July. So do we want to take that later in September, rather than push it forward to June? So if we can put that down for September? And then we'll agree another six months after that ongoing. And then the oncology, then what did we agree there?
Six months.
Six months again?
Yeah.
And the new service is expected to go live. What will a six months take us?
Do you know Katie, when it's, off the top of your head, when it goes live?
Already live?
So we're saying six months from this meeting?
So from, so June for that one?
Yeah.
June 24 to hear the first update back on that? Just microphone please, microphone please, Jeff. Put your microphone on.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying, probably be better in September as far as I'm concerned.
Agreed? Yeah, so put that one in September as well. Thank you. Okay. Right, I think that's us done. Any other business? Well, happy, thank you very much for your attendance today. See you next time.